Yeah, and I've seen it many places where there's an argument that Australian standards are in fact being met. And I just wish to put on a record that with respect to clinical standards, I have on repeated occasions had it acknowledged to myself by Dr. Dr. Fieldhouse who was the medical director at the time, by Mark Parrish, the regional medical director, by Miles Meara, who is a group medical director of a parent company like UMS. That they know that it doesn't actually meet Australian standards, but they're quite, they're told that to my face. So I feel it's quite clear even to those that would maintain our standards, that acceptable standards of care are not met. It sort of extends outside of my interest, and I just wanted to talk about the story of Matita. So this is the lady who came to Christmas Island, and due to the lack of capabilities in terms of ancient medical care, we were unable to determine whether or not she had twins, she believed that she had twins. And thinking that she did have twins, she was sent to the room. In the context of the conversation with the medical director about the capabilities of the room, the discussion progressed and I was told that she was being sent to the room as an open example. Now, this was to show that even if you're pregnant with twins, there will be no advantage and you will still be sent to the room. I was assured that there was a four bed, you know, labour unit that was capable of managing a twins delivery. Now, she was subsequently sent to the room and then later on to Brisbane, which was found not to have twins. During this, during this whole process, this Minister Morrison come out and berate the media, I'll sort of quote what he said. He said, "I strongly suggest that the media should more thoroughly interrogate the sorts of claims that are being represented to you." This suggestion that there has been pregnant women with twins on the room is simply not true. It's quite concerning to hear that type of characterization of what's going on. I think it needs a little bit more transparency and openness, and that's what this whole thing is, it needs to be a lot more transparent. So that we can actually determine easily what the standard of care is and how we can, how we can better approach it.
Thank you, Professor, for the tremendous opportunity and so thank you, Dr. Lee, for coming today and telling me the reasons why I'm back. Yes, I'd also like to acknowledge the Commissioner's involvement, thank you very much for coming here. I'm sure it's not easy things really, but we were aware of the letter and if I may say so, the very simple and kind of very objective description of the failure of providing care in those cases, there will be important evidence. I will, if I may, make a correction, the name Alatika is not to be published to protect its privacy. But of course we need these stories because that gives us the sense of what is, what is happening and what the responses are by the way. Oh, thank you, excellent, thank you very much. And now I'd like to call next witness to us Professor Elizabeth Elliot. Do you solve things sincerely if the answers give you questions that are severely misleading? Professor Elliot, do you have a period of attention?
Yes.
Could you please state your qualifications and your experience in nursing children?
I'm a pediatrician, consulting pediatrician at the Children's Hospital of Brisbane, and also professor of pediatrics and childhood at the University of Sydney, so I've been qualified for over thirty years.
You have been retained by the commission to provide some advice on the health of children in immigration.
Yes, I recently visited Christmas Island with the person.
Yes, and you were there in Christmas Island for approximately three days in July, earlier in July?
We were, in fact, we were delayed for fifty-three hours, I think, in Perth, about through the problem with the runway, which was indicative to a lot of us of the ridiculous situation of having people stranded four hours' flight from Perth with very limited access.
And prior to your role and advice in the commission, have you had any experience in dealing with asylum seekers in immigration detention?
No.
Is it right, I think the purpose of your visit to Christmas Island in July was to examine and consider the health of the children, the health of well-being of the children in immigration detention at Christmas Island?
The purpose was, as a commission, to make observations and to speak with parents and children. I was not there to provide clinical consultations, but we really did have a luxury of unstructured access to families and opportunities for long interviews with them and opportunities to visit them in their accommodation.
How many children ultimately did you stay with while you were at Christmas Island, were in an incentive interview?
I understand there were around two hundred people that we interviewed collectively, there were fathers in the team.
And those two hundred, some were children?
Yes, in fact, we interviewed unaccompanied violence, who were boys between the age of fourteen and seventeen, and then a whole lot of families with children.
Professor, yeah, for the benefit of those here today, could you tell us about your impressions and observations of Christmas Island? And whether you regard it as an appropriate place to detain children?
Well, I think as we've heard today, it's a totally unsuitable place to detain children. First of all, it's isolated, it's remote, it's tropical climate, very hot, there is a wet season, which is characterized by obviously torrential rain and high winds. People are living in small metal containers, as we've heard, in very close proximity. So there is inevitably spread of the common childhood infections that begin as we've heard, gout and respiratory infections. When we visited people living in that, they were really critical climate, so above bed, and then if you kind of cop beside that bed and put in there a small cupboard and a small fridge, then there's very little space for a child to, to walk around or play, perhaps a meter squared, which is totally unsatisfactory for children who are in developmental phases. One of the previous witnesses mentioned the walkway between the rows of cabins, and parents were very reluctant to put their children down to crawl on those because they were perceived as being dirty. They said, "You can spat on them, kids sometimes were not, people obviously were walking up and down them all day." So it was a very inappropriate place for children to play.
And what can you tell us about the spaces, other than in the cabins and containers? What spaces were available to children?
We did see a construction camp, there is a ground that has been built, I don't know whether that's been built following the visits by the previous doctors, and that now has a shank called on it. And we did see evidence of another play area being built nearby, a local, kids' playground, kids' playing areas. We were taken to a room because the women were very concerned about this lack of an appropriate space for children to play and explore. And we were taken to a room, which was a reasonably large room, air conditioning, but they're freshly decorated and some new rugs on the floors. And we were shown a cupboard where there were some new toys, and we were told that this was going to be a place that women with young children could take their children to play. But there are so many children on the island, there are plenty of people with children on the island. And it appears that people would be roasting to have access to that space, perhaps for another day. We don't know the details, and it did look to us that it hadn't yet been used.
What about the older, older kids, what spaces did they have to play and run around?
The older boys were particularly concerning because they were a group who was really very distressed and depressed. And they did say that they were taken to the ombud, sometimes twice a week to run around. There is a very nice swimming pool that's just been built on Christmas Island, really quite close to the camps. But I don't think the people in detention have any access to that pool. I personally didn't see basketball courts or tennis courts or anything else, any of the normal facilities that our children would have access to. I mean, they need for their development.
I'd take it you wouldn't spend some of your time on Christmas Island just walking around, making observations, is that right?
Well, it's very restrictive, we have to check in, show our passports, get a badge. They ask to give us mobile phones, not allowed taking photographs, you have to be accompanied by a guard all the time. So we didn't do a lot of wandering around, we wandered from one camp to another with guards. We were given good access during our passage.
What sort of activities did you observe children making while you were there?
Well, as one of the previous witnesses said, I didn't see many children playing. I think that one visit that we had to a room on construction land, I think there was some children playing in the structured playing area. But I didn't see children playing otherwise. And of course, one of the issues of great concern to all of us was that these children are not going to school. So they're not getting, they haven't grown up to their day and the only educational opportunities that we would anticipate is their run.
Well, Professor Elliot, what are these children doing when they're not playing and they're not going to school?
I don't know what they're doing most of the day. I mean, there is a structured program which we were shown, which identifies that there are outlets that people can participate in. Some people said to us, "Once you've done a bus trip three or four times and you're not allowed to get on the bus", then it becomes a bit pointless going on that trip again. So, you know, we mainly interviewed parents and we had set places to interview parents. We didn't, we weren't wandering around the camp, considering what children would do.
You mentioned there were hundreds of people for children on Christmas Island, about how many of them were babies?
Well, I don't know the exact figure, the commission probably got that figure, but I think there were at least twenty, twenty children that we saw. And that is children over the age of twelve months, and then I think there were twenty-six unaccompanied minors from the older boys.
You mentioned earlier that the mums of the babies, the late babies, fell on the ground and swore. What exactly is that about babies?
Well, of course, it appears with their motor development, it's all, it's monetary behaviour there, fine motor development. I mean, it's a very odd situation to find a baby in this restricted space. The other concern that they had, and this was very beginning again with us, is that Christmas Island is a very bizarre place. There's some very bizarre birds and animals. And one of the complaints from their parents was there are giant ascetic beings on Christmas Island, which really can give you a painful sting, particularly bad for the young child. And they were very anxious, of course, these are sprayed for, admittedly, they live up in the cabins, and when the spraying takes place, they often come up into the cabin and they're found in shoes or socks. The other issue was these giant goblin crabs, which are familiar with Ireland, and which are bizarre creatures. And Christmas Island framed them, they were fruit birds, which died a lot of the time, so it's really quite intimidating to them in a environment for adults that are on children.
Did the children say anything about the crabs or those?
They did, some of them were having nightmares of the crabs.
And what are you able to tell us about their physical properties on Christmas Island?
Well, as we know, young children are susceptible to any virus that comes their way. Certainly when we were there, there was a group of children who had, I would suggest, respiratory symptoms. They were coughing and wheezing really quickly, and that's a common virus that in young children can cause bronchialitis, lower airway disease, but in older children and adults might cause a cold or a cough. So there was that sort of illness, gastrodrives and respiratory illness, skin illness. And then there were more chronic problems, a lot of children had asthma, had adults had asthma, itchy eyes and itchy skin. Incholeprosate dust was raised earlier, and I'm not sure about the association between those symptoms and the environment. And then there were kids with problems that required surgical attention, for example, a child with an abscess under her chin, a boy with an unended intestines that required surgery. And the delays in getting to that special thing was of course a blank for certain parents. There were some children, there was a two and a half year old child who wasn't speaking yet, he was hearing a coughing assis. There was a child with a blue ear that had an operation, was waiting to transfer to the bayonet. And the uncertainty posed by these delays is really very upsetting for parents. And one thing that we found particularly bizarre was that parents were unable to be told for some reason when they were to be transferred. So even if they were going the next day and they were highly anxious, they were told that maybe they need transferred, we were told that was for security reasons.
What are your records to tell us about the development halfway of babies and young children, whether they've been affected by immigration detention?
Well, I think we heard from the psychiatrist earlier that the mental health, the state of level of anxiety and depression of mothers is really transferred to young infants, they perceive that it disrupts the bond between mother and child, and that can adversely affect outcomes. So for example, we know that it's not only deprivation of nutrition that can cause growth failure, for example. We know that there is what's called non-organic failure to thrive, failure to grow, which is secondary to lack of attention, lack of interaction between the environment and the child. And of course, there are all mental health concerns that we saw. So we saw young children who had regressive bed waking, who'd started stuttering, who were having nightmares. We saw older children who were having flashbacks associated with the trauma experienced in their own country and were unable to sleep. Who said they were crying a lot of the time, always, you know, four, five, ten, sixteen, were crying most of the time, felt helpless and hopeless. And we heard some of the self-harm. We saw children who had withdrawn from their parents. We went to see one little girl who'd been under a blanket for three days, she was aged twelve. Her mother had self-harm, she was taught about self-harm. She was saying it would be better to be dead than living here, and she was refusing to eat. And in a letter that she wrote to us, she said that she figured that if she just went to her room and stopped eating, maybe she would die and maybe that would be the best way out.
Elliot, I want to put a percentage on the number of children you were taken aware of or spoke to who were exhibiting signs of mental distress.
I have to say that almost every child we spoke to who could articulate their feelings expressed distress, meaningful distress. The younger children often expressed their distress through drawings, so it's a world we have to, to make a drawing. And certainly the commission had some of those drawings. Children described themselves as living down, and children drew themselves almost deliberately with tears. And they certainly were very much picking up on the distress of their parents. So we have a situation where people have been traumatized in their own country and have been really traumatized. The, so I'm just, what I was saying, some of the unaccompanied boys had their age determinate been correct. So not only did they get traumatized at home, then on a boat trip arrived in Christmas Island, they had been sent to another island, where they were very traumatized with the course of approaches and disruption of what was happening within this camp there. And then they were sent back to Christmas Island, only to be told that as soon as they turned eight, they would be done back to another. So there's a little anticipatory trauma as well, because people anticipate that their lives are going to get worse while they're in there.
And of course, as a pediatrician, you're concerned not only with their mental well-being of the children, but also with their physical well-being. If I could put a percentage on the number of children you become aware of at Christmas Island who had problems with their physical health?
Well, I can't give you a percentage, but again, a large proportion of the children that we saw had one or other food or health problem.
And are you able to make any comments on the nutrition of the children, whether they were well nourished or poorly nourished?
The foremost universal, they described the food was poor, and they didn't like the food. The week that we visited, they said for the first time, Adelaide had had some watermelons and mandarins. The children had never seen those before, no pregnancy, only had apples. We had a lot of complaints that there weren't eggs available for children. So eggs, as you know, are quite a staple part of the diet of young children, and in some cultures have really significance for nurturing children. And we did ask why eggs weren't available, one, apparently they're expensive, and two, of course, every, every bit of fresh bird has to be flown in. What was rather ironic about the eggs was that the place was full with wild chickens, which apparently couldn't be used to harvest eggs. And when we pursued this issue of why women couldn't have access to eggs to cook for their children, we were told it was an infection risk. So although we questioned that women would probably be able to cook any adequately to their child, this was, we were told that was not the case.
Professor Elliot, did you inform anyone about whether detention interrupts the ordinary parenting roles that are formed by parents in relation to their children?
Absolutely, and I think as you know, when we were there, we were ten men, I think, on twenty-four hour surveillance because they'd self-harmed.
I'll come back to that.
Well, it's in relation to your question, these were all people, young, young children under the age of twelve months, so the, yeah, the fathers had to take all the guarantee. And that certainly disrupts the relationships, and the older children often feel responsible for looking after these children if their mother is lying on the bed and not coming out of the cabin or unable to relate to the child. And we certainly saw in our interviews, many, many women with just desperately sad faces, who had no, had a very flat effect and weren't relating to anyone, let alone relating appropriately to the child.
In your clinical opinion, and based on the observations that you made at Christmas Island, how seriously are the conditions on Christmas Island affecting the health and development of the children?
Well, I think there's no doubt that the conditions on the island, not only the remoteness and the climate, but the living conditions and the high level of mental ill health cannot fail to have an effect on the children. The other issue that I touched on earlier is the lack of opportunities for both pre-vent and structured sporting activities, and also the lack of education. At least if those children were in regular schooling, they would have some friendships and peer support, the support of their teachers. And many of the older boys particularly expressed the fact that they felt they were just missing out on education and essential time in their lives.
So can you tell us what the situation was with respect to schooling and the provision of education on Christmas Island?
It was a bit unclear at the time that some of the children had gone for some visits to the school outside the detention centre. Although one of the children said that they were bullied by, by some of the children in that school. Some of the children had attended the English language classes, and they were not going to any school. And at the time we were there, we weren't quite sure why that was, perhaps it was because it was school holiday, perhaps it was because the school was due to open soon, sometime soon. So it appeared that they'd been really very little in the way of education, and I remember most of the people that had been on Christmas Island now for over a year.
So while you were there, was it clear that there was no schooling actually offered within the detention centre?
There was nothing with all of it? We did meet at the airport, I think the president's went to the incoming in of the school. So there is a school which is still in its opening, we have no details about who will be offered schooling, whether it's a full-time school here or what.
But your point is that there have been many, many children on Christmas Island for a long period already who have not had access to school, is that right?
Absolutely.
And you, if you're not, if I say so, then you're in a position to state what you anticipate will be the longer term impact of children and the development of children by reason of the fact that they've been in immigration detention on Christmas Island?
Well, I mean, there's no doubt that this sort of trauma in young children can have a lasting impact, you know, on mental health, on anxiety, depression, self-worth, perception of foodlessness. And I think one of the most difficult aspects is that there, as you alluded to earlier in the question, there is no constant child psychologist or any other child psychiatrist available in a sentence. And I think it is a bit of great concern, I mean, I did say one aspect of the behaviour was concerned. We know that young children who are abused animals are more likely to grow up to have exhibit antisocial behaviours. And we were told stories of some of the children, not all, but a few of the children kicking these wild chickens on the island and picking up and manhandling the chickens. And so that sort of behaviour is quite alarming and concerning. And I have no doubt that unless these children get a public care, many of them could go on to have nocturnal problems.
And I wanted to ask you a little bit about the care that was available for children on Christmas Island. In your discussions with the parents and the children, do you make sense whether a child psychiatrist ever attended Christmas Island?
Look, I was told by Mark Parrish that there was a child psychiatrist who I think had just visited or was about to visit Christmas Island, but I don't have any concept of how often they could, or how many times a child psychiatrist would be on the island. But that information should be available to.
Can you tell me, if medical services are provided and available on the island, adequate to meet the needs of children?
Well, we've heard very practically that they're not adequate. And in fact, everything that we've heard from what it misses this morning, reinforce the information that we received during our interviews. So when you're interviewing people, it's particularly people who have expressed it's hard to know how accurate that information might be, whether it might be exaggerated, but it's all completely programmed by the information that we've heard. So first of all, there are lots of kids, they're not getting services quickly enough, and they're certainly not getting the specialized services that are only available in some mainland centres. And if I can come to one of the questions you raised in a previous session. We were told that one of the reasons that women, that people are not transferred is that there is not necessary accommodation available in the first, but medical services are available. So for example, there's often accommodation available in the detention centre in Darwin, but the specialized, let's say, pediatric cardiology services are not available at that site. So there is a major problem with transfers, and we heard story after story of delays in transfers for medical care.
Are there any comments that you would like to make regarding the management of medical services on Christmas Island, based on your expectation?
I didn't work in the medical services, I don't think I can really comment, although we did have a we did have a few disappointing stories that we heard. One of them was a young woman who was suicidal, who was to be transferred to the mainland because she was another suicide attempt. And her key support person was her brother. She'd been very traumatised and round country. And the president spoke to the immigration department and raised this case because it was one that was very distressing to all of us. We heard the next day that she refused to be transferred to the mainland. And when inquired, the doctor said it was because he had deemed that the brother, well, it was because the brother was not allowed going. And when we asked why the brother was not allowed going, it was deemed that he was not relevant in the clinical care of this woman. Now, this was a mental health problem, a suicidal woman, a young intelligent university student, who was being denied that sort of support. So, you know, I think there seems an absolute adherence to policy without inflexibility that we would expect. And I think clinicians in this setting, as we heard, have got a very important role to advocate, but appear to have, you know, to struggle to do that.
Professor Elliot, can I now ask you about an event that's recently occurred on Christmas Island? Apparently there are a number of young mothers who are on suicide watch at Christmas Island at the moment following an incident that occurred, I think on around the 7th of July this year. Firstly, can I ask you, what was that incident that occurred?
Just to take a step back, these women with young children were concerned about the conditions in which they were women, felt that they were detrimental to their children, and swiped to the immigration department. And the immigration department, I think their request was, could they replace someone more suitable, at least until their case for consideration for asylum was heard. They were then given a meeting date, and they met with the immigration officer, and the reports that we got from the mothers was that all that they were told was, you will never be sent to Australia, you will be going to Nauru and Manas Island, and that's the end of the story. Now, I think these women had hoped that, having got together as a big group, along with their families, to give their case on behalf of their children, that they may have got some sympathetic treatment. But the abruptness of the response really, I think, set off an episode. And many of these women just felt that was the last straw, they were going to be stuck here forever, and many of those were in self-harm. So I think the total was about fifteen self-harmed, and certainly when we were there, there were ten on suicide watch or self-harm watch. Now, one of the problems with that is that self-harm watch on Christmas Island is offered by a big burly man with, you know, tattoos and piercings, who the women are sure of quite frightening. They're in these small cabins, they are in condition because it's very hot, but the door has to be open all the time for this observation. So this sort of lack of compassion, lack of humanity, we wouldn't have a young woman with a very young suicide watch by a man if they didn't know in full view of everyone else. We would have heard, so help watching that person.
And is it likely to actually spiral with some of the women who had self-harm, they started their families?
We spoke with all of them. And just to go back to the incident, the incident, you know, people started screaming and shouting, they threw plates out of their windows, they ruined furniture, they didn't know what to do, there were mirrors smashed, people tried them to cut themselves. And as I said, there was a whole state of self-harm in association with that information that they were given. So coming back, yes, we did speak to all of the women who were there watched.
Was it just a stunt, what they did, or was this a serious?
It has been suggested that this was black rap, that these people were only trying to hang themselves or cut themselves because they wanted to get off the island. I mean, certainly they wanted to get off the island, but really, you have to take a step back. What young woman with a young child who wants self-harm, unless they were absolutely desperately helpless, particularly in front of their children? And we spoke to a lot of children who witnessed this episode as well, the smashing of glass, the screaming and shouting. It was a very frightening episode for everyone concerned.
Are you able to give us some examples of women who did self-harm?
Yes, I mean, there are people who've been particularly evident and physically abused in their own country, who have gone on a boat, which they now see as their crime, to bring their children to Australia. One particular woman had a thirteen-year-old boy and a twelve-year-old girl and a baby. She, after this announcement that there is no hope of moving the children to a better environment, she tried to cut herself. The children witnessed this, and she's been very depressed in my observation since then. So she's got three children, three babies, I think nine months old, and weighs seven kilos, and hasn't gained weight for nearly three months. And, you know, I just had a brief look at the baby, certainly evidence of decreased subcutaneous tissue, which usually suggests a slight loss of weight, gain weight. The next child up is a child who is twelve, who had retreated to her room for three days. She had refused to eat and speak to anyone. When we went to visit her, we didn't get her to speak, but she really feels that she's the child that said, my life is steep. And she had been threatening self-harm. One of her other concerns was, what I mean, the depressed state of her mother and other people, she said, was that there had been a few girls, and I don't know their circumstances, who had been transferred to Sydney, and she was able to see pictures of them on the internet and just could not understand how she could be different to someone else. So I think that's another issue of concern, is that people don't understand these discrepancies in policy. And the third child was a thirteen-year-old boy. And these children had all been physically abused in their own country by a downwind wind. He had started stuttering and then stopped speaking, and he was clearly very expressing hopelessness as well. So within this family, there were really four people who were suffering from the trauma of this situation. You know, we were all very distressed by this, and I think that what also brought it home to me was all the interpreters for the girls that were crying, you know, to this. So it was evident that perhaps they hadn't heard these long discussions, people hadn't heard the detail of the extent of the distress.
Now, Professor, you had the data that speaking another of the women who had engaged in self-harm in early July. How serious is the mental health issues?
Well, the young women are probably the, the young women with young children are not a high-risk category issue for suicide and self-harm. I guess perhaps they've got postnatal depression, for example, but I'm just repeating that question.
Is it, how seriously did you hear about their mental health issues?
Well, very serious. I think for anyone to resort to self-harm, particularly someone who has dependent children, is extremely serious. And I might just say this while I think of it, that one of the major concerns which came up again and again and again was the uncertainty of the future. So people said again and again, haven't you been assessed? Even if you won't have us in Australia, you're going to send someone else, someone else, please tell us when you might assist, please get into this process. And I think that this protest that you referred to earlier was at exactly the time of the year in detention. And I think people sort of go on, crawl out, thinking, oh, perhaps there's hope, and then they reach an absolute end point. And that input for a lot of them was that one anniversary of getting into detention. So I think it is very serious, the current mood and mental health environment in Christmas Island at present.
Professor, in your opinion, as a period of transition, is it appropriate to have babies to be taken to Christmas Island?
No, I don't think it's an appropriate place to have babies unless it's for a very short period of time for processing. And I really have a great fear that there will be an outbreak of a serious disease. And in that case, people are really eight hours from the mainland for our flight either way.
And again, Professor, if in your opinion, as a period of transition, is it appropriate for children to be detained on Christmas Island? So, Professor, Scott Morrison, the Minister of Immigration, not just on this, but very good for us now, that the condition is not a threat. He says, and I hope this is a good record, this is a difficult environment, and the quality of care is provided by our people. Now, Professor, you are a doctor. Is appropriate, is appropriate care being provided to the children on Christmas Island?
I suspect that the people working on Christmas Island are doing their best within the constraints of the system, but it is totally inappropriate to have young children in crowded environments in a very remote location without access to the full range of medical facilities. And we've heard many examples of the lack of access to specialised care, which is clearly needed in this situation. So the services really cannot be adequate with those considerations.
And lastly, Professor, is there anything else, based on your visit to Christmas Island, the long interviews with the parents and children, in regard to this inquiry about the treatment, the care, or the health of children in relation with the condition?
Well, I think, you know, we really need a bit of humanity and a bit of compassion. We didn't see a lot of that on Christmas Island. I think that you're dealing with a very serious situation. I've only been to Christmas Island, I don't know what it's like, and the other, in the offshore detention centres in Nauru and Manas Island. And I think that, as has been said in the media, the story does need to get out. I think regardless of the political posse, these people are currently in our care, and we must treat them humanely, and we must offer them, particularly for children, the opportunities for access to health and education freely, that we would expect for any of our
Well, thank you very much, Professor Elliot, for your evidence. Well, you're now taking a break, just a short break, until I think about, just a minute break, if you don't mind coming back, because we do have a number of other people whose evidence we want to discuss. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 I don't think so.
Yeah.
Oh, this is so one thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, it's all.
Yes. It's a bit more expensive.
John Paul, John Paul Center. No, what one is. So.
Even, even me. I forgot about that.
Right, sorry.
I spoke so. I was like. So about. Yes. Exactly.
Uh.
Yes, seven, four, five. Yes, please. That links glasses. Much. That's the way. They were talking about four year old. Well, it's.
Thank you very much for coming back so promptly. Uh, I'd now like to call upon my name, Kirsty Diallo.
Please, Senator, thanks to President Chris. Do you saw sincerely the answers you give to the questions asked of your amazing student teacher?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Diallo, and I'll hand over to Castle.
And they couldn't say their full name for the record, please. My name is Kirsty Dan Gill. But could I just explain that I'm going to spend around fifteen minutes asking questions of you? Then we're going to stand you down, as it were, and ask some departmental representatives some questions because they understand they only have a very specific timeframes during which they're available today. So I apologize for the inconvenience to you, but we'll make us start in the interest of getting through the busy agenda today. Uh, Miss Diallo, you were formerly deployed by an organisation called Save the Children.
Yes, that's right.
And in that capacity, uh, let me confess that you no longer work with Save the Children.
Uh, no.
All right. When did you stop working with them?
I finished working with them at the end of January two thousand and thirteen.
Are in the capacity of working with them, you went to Nauru?
That's right, I worked on it in Nauru.
Like, when were you, what, what date were you at Nauru?
Um, I think I flew their first rotation at the end of October. Uh, and I left my final rotation was late January.
What was your role and position on Nauru?
I was a child protection support worker.
And just to be clear, you worked at the detention centre there?
I worked in the official processing centre number three, which is where the families and children were.
Okay. And one of your roles there in relation to the children was to develop individual management plans for them?
That's right. And to report and review them.
Uh, we may take it you had a good deal of interaction with the children in the detention centre at Nauru?
I was in the camp every day that I worked, I worked six days straight, and then I was a day off. So I saw the children and families every day.
And may we also take it that you made it your business to understand as much as you could about the situation of the children on Nauru?
That's right. We can, all the social work is completed, psychosocial assistance, so that includes understanding the dynamics in the family as well, the development needs of the child, and, um, I guess how they're coping and mental health issues, medical issues.
And it's right, Miss Diallo, that you have a background in social work and in child protection.
That's right, I've worked, um, for sixteen years as a social worker. I worked for six and a half years in sexual assault as a council advocate, specifically with children. And I also worked in child protection in Victoria and in the UK.
Now, uh, according to data, uh, published by the department, as of the thirtieth of June this year, there were one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine people in detention on Nauru, including one hundred and ninety-three children. Uh, now, doing the maths, that means that at that time seventeen percent of all detainees on Nauru were children. Now, is it correct that all of those children were accommodated at the official processing centre three?
I can't be certain if at that time they were all accommodated in OPC three. Some may have been provided because I, because I know that because I can do it there. How to generate.
Now OPC three is surrounded by a high security fence.
It is, and they've actually rebuilt the fence since I left. So initially it was a wire fence, but I believe that they built up an even higher fence now.
And, uh, children and families free to come and go as they please?
No, they are. There's a security checkpoint, anybody going in or out of the camp has to be, um, monitored, uh, with a metal detector, um, before they can go in or go out. And children have to be given a reason, so they have to be given appointments to be able to leave the camp.
And, and what sorts of procedures have followed before children can leave the camp?
So children would have to be given appointments for a specific reason to leave the camp, because they can't leave the camp for education, for example. Um, or medical appointments, often medical appointments occur in the camp. It might just be mental health appointments that they get to leave the facility. Or if they were part of a pilot at the time where they got to go to a local school, that generally, um, they couldn't just leave the camp. So once they were given a reason to leave, they had to then sit and wait, um, in a waiting area where there was security, um, for a bus to come to collect them. They might sit there in the sun twenty, thirty minutes, depending how long it takes for the bus. They would have the metal detector put over them before they got on the bus. And then it would be made to a particular safety vest, a colour that would indicate to everybody that they were actually detained in.
Uh, to, to your knowledge and observation, how were children responding to these kinds of security measures?
Um, children were often distressed. There was one, uh, eleven year old girl who told me a story when I first started working there about how she'd gone on an excursion, and she wanted to take back her shell that she found at the beach. And she was searched by, um, security and they made her, they took away her shell. And she was distressed about the fact that she wasn't even allowed to have an item like that and take it in to the centre.
Now, can you describe the nature of the accommodation provided to families and children on Nauru in OPC three?
All families are accommodated in tents, plastic tents. Um, on the ground is, um, masonite panels. Uh, the, the tents house approximately six families. So they're divided with a partition, a plastic partition. There's no doors, um, it's just, uh, two pieces of plastic that overlap that they use as a door. Um, there's no privacy, there's no actual ceiling or a partition at the, at the top of the tent. So you can hear what's happening in the, um, the space next to you. Um, it's incredibly hot because it's actually, um, in abandoned quarries. So it's actually down a hill to get into the centre. There's no breeze because it's not situated close to the ocean. Um, there's white rocks that cover the ground and they seem to attract the heat. So it's also significant glare from, from the white rocks. So for, for staff, you always had to wear sunglasses. It was impossible to get around the camp without sunglasses on because of the glare would hurt your eyes. Often children and families didn't have sunglasses, they also didn't have hats, right? But we would wear hats.
Um, what temperatures did it ordinarily reach in Nauru?
Um, I think the hu- the hu- it's quite a humid environment. So I think the temperatures probably close to the ocean are about thirty-seven, thirty-eight degrees, but quite high humidity. In the camp, in the tents, it would be ordinarily forty degrees.
Um, is that inside the tents or outside?
Inside the tents.
But was there any fans or air conditioning?
Most families were issued with a thirty centimetre size, about that big, um, fan. And that was it, inside the tent.
Um, is it right that there's a wet season and a dry season in Nauru?
There is a wet season, um, when I was there, it was quite late, the season had come. But, um, yeah, there's wet season, it's sporadic, downpours of rain. So obviously the water would run down the hills into the quarry, which is where the OPC three was.
Well, I, I wanted to ask you, what happened to the accommodation with rain?
Um, I wasn't there during huge downpour, so I don't know, but I'm assuming that the accommodation flooded. I know that I worked previously in OPC one when it was just me. And one of the main issues was that the tents would flood when it rained.
Were there any raised walkways in OPC three?
No, there was no marked walkway.
Were there any mechanisms at all for soundproofing in these tents between the different families?
Um, they were just plastics, so there was no way to sample.
Was there any security in these tents between the different families or to prevent people coming into the tents?
No, there wasn't. If there were specific concerns around safety of, of someone, then, um, security might, um, monitor that situation more closely. Maybe they stand near that tent.
But to your observation, was the nature of the accommodation having any impact on the children detained at OPC three?
I saw, uh, dramatic, um. The children's mental health suffered significantly and I witnessed a dramatic deterioration in children's mental health over the course of my time in Nauru in OPC.
Did, was it your view that the very form of accommodation was contributing to that decline?
Yes, the children were aware that they couldn't leave the centre, so they would be distressed by that. Children have witnessed, um, one, uh, two children have witnessed their father being assaulted because he was speaking in his own language and was apparently very animated, so the guard asked that to be a threat and assaulted him. And he, as a result, ended up with an injured arm. Another father was arrested because he walked out of the centre. Um, and was put in jail for three days. So children were aware that this environment was like a prison, I guess, and that they couldn't leave. They would often ask, why are we here? When can we leave? Um, one eleven year old girl asked the Red Cross, why are we here? We didn't choose to come here, this was our parents' decision, why are we here?
Can I just return to the accommodation, uh, for one moment? Was it a fairly noisy environment in these communal tents?
It was very noisy, it was difficult for, um, parents to have a regular routine for their children, to put them to sleep. And parents would say, you know, um, if they try and put their child to bed at a regular time, it was difficult because you could hear the other children in the camp and could hear the children right next to you crying. So, um, they had problems getting their children to sleep and maintaining the routine.
And, uh, the next question I was going to ask you was, were there any impacts, to your knowledge, on the ability of children to sleep because of the accommodation there?
Or children's routines? I don't think there were many children at all that had a regular routine. Often they would stay up very, very late and some of the children would be in the centre. There was no curfew, um, so they would just be running around in the centre. Um, the coolest time was at night, so often that's when families would come out of the, the tents because it was cooler and, you know, felt more comfortable at that time. So children would be up late because of that as well.
Were the children able to play in their accommodation during the day?
No, there were no facilities for play. Um, there were no books, there were no toys, there was no real space for children to play. There was no tables and chairs in any of the families' accommodation. Therefore, families couldn't sit with their children and do homework or have a meal together. Um, children, they weren't allowed to take food out of the dining space, so they weren't even allowed to eat in the accommodation.
Um, what was the setup for showers and bathrooms at OPC three?
So the shower blocks were situated at a sort of central point, which was away from the accommodation. So children would, um, complain about having to walk quite a distance at night to go to the toilet. And if they were often scared, they would have to be accompanied by an adult. They had four minute showers only. Um, most of the children that I worked with had begun wetting the bed since arriving in Nauru. So there was an additional issue of needing to, um, make sure that the child was clean, but also wash their underwear because there was a limit to how much underwear children had. So parents were often trying to wash their underwear if they had maybe two or three pairs.
How many showers and toilets were there?
I don't recall specifically, there was probably maybe four shower blocks at that time.
Did you have any, uh, safety concerns about the shower and toilet facilities for the children?
There were safety concerns, obviously, children having to walk a distance to get to, to the bathroom, there's safety concerns. Um, I'll probably talk later about an instance where a young person was sexually assaulted. That happened, um, just around the corner from the shower block.
Are the facilities lighted at night, red at night?
Um, there's blood lights, but there's not specific lighting around the shower blocks.
Uh, do you have any comments on the sanitation limits in the showers and bathrooms as well?
There were issues around sanitation at times, the, um, centre actually wearing alcohol soap. So there was no hand soap, um, and parents expressed concern particularly because, um, there are regular outbreaks of, of gastroenteritis in Nauru, um, so there were concerns about the children and the health of the families in the camp.
And to your knowledge, have there been, do you have concerns with the water supply on Nauru and the detention centre there?
All water has to be brought in, so you, um, Nauru doesn't have a natural water supply, so all of it has to be brought in. So, um, that, those had to be refilled regularly by staff.
Did, um, the water ever run out, to your knowledge?
Not more, I was.
Uh, Miss Diallo, I, I mentioned previously that, um, the departmental representatives only had a, a specific window, typical time, that the time was coming out. Is it okay if I ask you to stand down, uh, for a little while and we'll recall you probably after lunch?
That's fine.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate your giving us so much of your time. Um, but well, now I'm, uh, called for my, the, um, the Department of Immigration Officials, um, Mr. Martin Bowles, who is the Secretary of the Department. Uh, Mr. Mark Cormack, who is the Deputy Secretary, Immigration, Status and Resemission Group. And, and Miss Katie Constantino, who is the Assistant Secretary and is particularly assigned to Task Force to assist you, Australian Immigration and Rights Commission in its inquiry.
Please, Senator, thanks to President Chris. Do you swear before Almighty God that the answers you will give to the questions asked of your amazing students are true? Please, Senator, thanks to President Chris. Do you swear before Almighty God that the answers you will give to the questions asked of your amazing students are true? Do you swear before Almighty God that the answers you will give to the questions asked of your amazing students are true?
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Secretary, um, and, and Mr. Corey Constantino. Uh, thank you for your time, we do appreciate that you've come from camera. Um, but as you know, the aim is to get as close to the facts and the truth as possible in the course of this inquiry. So your time is going to be very important for this, uh, the next phase. Uh, I pass upon my name to Council, who will, uh, um, direct the costumes. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, sir.
If you would like to make a note, we said that's dreadful, Jim. Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, uh, good afternoon, President and others. Uh, before commencing, uh, I'd like to acknowledge, uh, that this, this meeting has been held on the traditional lands of the Gaddigal people and pay, uh, our respects to the elders of both parts of the country. Thank you for the invitation to appear at this third public, uh, hearing. Uh, as with the first two hearings, the department is pleased to have the opportunity, opportunity to deliver an opening statement and to speak to the commission. In its opening statement, uh, to the first two hearings, the department has already spoken in some detail about the range of improvements that have been made to the administration of immigration detention in Australia for the ten years since the previous inquiry. The department has spoken about improvements to model for government, case management, service delivery and care. Uh, improvements designed to ensure that individuals are treated with dignity and respect and are provided with care and services according to their needs. The department has also spoken about its ongoing commitment to a program of engagement to stakeholders and public scrutiny bodies, which ensures continued transparency and accountability of, uh, immigration detention in Australia. Importantly, the department remains committed to the ongoing improvement of immigration detention and to ensuring that the accommodation and services provided remain appropriate for individuals and families while they remain in our care. President, the department, uh, has been heartened by the sta- by the statements you have made, particularly at the outset of this inquiry, that you are committed to an evidence-based process and that you're looking to ensure that any claims made to the inquiry or by the inquiry can be supported in fact. The department has sought to support you in this respect by engaging closely with members of your staff through the duration of the inquiry and by providing information and documents to the commission on the quest. I note in some reservation that since the time of the second hearing and the commission's return to visit, uh, the Christmas Island facilities nearly in this month, there appears to be a shift away from this approach. Whilst the commission has already gone on record in the media regarding this visit, I would like to take the opportunity to touch on a few issues that have been discussed either directly with the department in the course of the commission's visit or in the media over the past few, uh, weeks. I reject claims, uh, made in the media in relation to the conditions on Christmas Island. They have been highly emotive claims which offend greatly the skilled professionals, both public servants and service provider staff who work to deliver high quality care in difficult circumstances. Chest and gut infections are not pervasive on Christmas Island as claimed. All illnesses are treated with proper and appropriate medical and other support. The healthcare services available to detainees on Christmas Island, including women and children, are commensurate with those available in the Australian community. While members of the commission have sought, uh, to, to question this during the, the course of the inquiry, I have not yet seen any evidence to support these claims. It is concerning to me that despite the department's considerable efforts to date to remain open, engaged and forthcoming with the commission, we have seen statements in the media suggesting that the department has redefined suicide attempt as acts of self-harm. Uh, and that it has been less than honest in terms regarding the public's right to understand the conditions on Christmas Island and the associated impact on detainees. Conversely, it is entirely misleading to redefine some acts of self-harm as attempted suicide. The department has and continues to provide the commission with, with the data it has required regarding instances of self-harm. You have been provided with the relevant incident reports and through this have been provided with appropriate visibility regarding the nature of those incidents of self-harm. This characterisation is quite disturbing to the many professional staff and service providers who do their best to manage these difficult circumstances and issues in a highly contested policy space. For its part, the department recognises that the challenges in managing self-harm, uh, risk are not unique to immigration detention. They are facing other settings, including the Australian community. The department and its service providers seek to manage such instances appropriately and have processes in place to prevent or reduce further incidents. I'd like to make the point that, uh, as, as made on numerous occasions during the course of this inquiry, the department remains committed to ensuring that the conditions of detention meet the needs of detainees, include families uh, and children. Through the service providers, the department implements government policy to deliver programs and services which meet these needs. President, I would respectfully suggest that any assertion of the conditions on Christmas Island must continue to make reference to the many improvements and considerable progress that has already been made, particularly over the last year, as, as well as taking account of the further improvements currently at various stages of planning and implementation designed to further improve the environment amenities available on Christmas Island. Appropriate funding has been provided to, for these improvements. Uh, you were afforded the opportunity to see as part of your recent visit to Christmas Island the recent works to establish a learning centre, uh, which includes ten classrooms, a library, teachers, teachers' offices, a multi-purpose play area and assembly. I am pleased to confirm that classes at the learning centre commenced this week after many months of planning and delivering. Additional works at Bosbait Hill sites include the refurbishment of kitchenettes, which will allow for some additional basic self-catering, the provision of new activity spaces, the installation of a kitchen to be used for programmes and activities and the installation of a gymnasium and recreation equipment, including pool and air hopping channels. Refurbishment of accommodation is also in train at Bosbait Hill and planning and design work is commenced to better support family-style living and for further recreational spaces. At the construction campsite, a creche and place centre has been established with the classes already underway and more becoming available in the coming weeks as, as works are completed. Installation of additional large screen televisions and DVD players is underway and a sewing room is being installed. Plans are, are being made for the provision of gardens and playgrounds along with the installation of, of a, of a teaching kitchen and gymnasium. Uh, basic self-catering options are also being explored for the construction campsite and basic refurbishment of accommodation and amenity areas, uh, is, uh, is occurring in a state now. The improvements to Christmas Island environment are not only limited to infrastructure improvements. The department has been working steadily to reduce the overall population on Christmas Island, which itself has resulted in some significant improvements to the amenity of the environment and to the flexibility. and to the flexibility in which resources are used for the benefit of detainees. President, as you would remember at the peak of the arrivals in July 2013, Christmas Island was receiving approximately four and a half thousand people into the centre every month. At that time, there were 1,992 children in held detention, including 688 children held on Christmas Island. The Department has effected significant changes since this time and the number of children in held detention has now reduced to 659 as at the 22nd of July 2014, with 153 children remaining on Christmas Island. This represents a net reduction of over 530 children on Christmas Island in the past twelve months and a net reduction of 1,330 in the number of children in held detention overall. Indeed, any assessment of immigration detention in Australia must similarly take into account the changing and dynamic nature of the immigration detention programme. It is the Department's ability to respond to change in a manner that ensures services remain appropriate that characterises many of the most significant improvements that have been made over the past decade. It is not to say that the Department gets it right all the time. We are on record acknowledging the recent deficit in access to education services on Christmas Island, as a case in point. However, where such shortcomings are identified at a particular point in time, the Department works diligently towards their resolution as it is done with the recent establishment and commencement of the learning centre on Christmas Island. President, the Department accepts that the Commission will receive a range of opinions, assertions and allegations both from detainees and from stakeholders and interested parties during the course of its inquiry. For its part, the Department continues to offer its full cooperation and support, particularly to the extent it can offer data and other information which will serve to verify claims made. It is vital that the facts and information provided by the Department are used to contribute to a complete and balanced view of immigration detention rather than being selectively used to support a particular position. As is appropriate, the Department will continue to offer a professional and expert service to government in implementing its policies in the administration of its immigration detention programme. All individuals in detention will continue to be provided with proper and appropriate medical care and support. Finally, I note that at a previous hearing in Melbourne, the Department was asked to provide the average cost of holding an individual in detention on Christmas Island in comparison to that of holding an individual in detention facilities in Darwin. Can I reiterate that the Department is not funded to provide immigration detention services on an average per capita cost basis? Funding is determined based on a demand-driven funding model which takes into account the complexity of the environment as well as the specific needs of the detainees. I would again like to note the record, the Department's position that the accommodation and care of children and families at offshore processing centres does not fall within the scope of the inquiry and as such, the Department will not discuss these matters at this public hearing. I'd also like to make a brief comment in the report released yesterday by the Australian Church's Refugee Task Force in its goal of protecting the lonely children. The Department takes the protection of children very seriously and is committed to ensuring they are protected from exploitation and abuse. To the extent that the allegations made in the report relate to specific circumstances, I am extremely concerned that the task force has not already provided details to the Department so that these can be urgently investigated and the appropriate protection mechanisms engaged, including referral to police if appropriate. I have written directly to the Chair of the Task Force, the very Reverend Dr Peter Cat, requesting that the specific allegations be put to the Department urgently for this purpose. I'd like to extend my thanks to the Commission and the President for inviting the Department to appear at this hearing and at previous hearings. I look forward to any recommendations of the Office that will assist us in proving the services offered to children in immigration detention within the current legislative and policy framework. Can I finally thank my staff and service providers for their professionalism and dedication in the delivery of services in a highly contested policy space? My colleagues and I happen to respond to specific questions, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Bowles, and I do appreciate your comments. And for the sake of those who are here today, it might be worth understanding that that you have appreciated that the core objective of this inquiry is to get some facts and the task force that assists us, particularly headed by Katie Constantino, has been excellent and we've had a lot of careful and detailed support over some months now, we appreciate that. But the key point that I'd like people to understand is that we will report in draft form to the Department and the Department will have an opportunity to collect any errors that we might have made on their perception or understanding of the facts. So that before we finally report to Parliament, as I am bound to do in September, there will have been a fair opportunity for the Department to challenge any conclusions that we reach if we have reached those conclusions on a misunderstanding of facts. So of course, we are receiving very powerful evidence that would in fact contradict many of the points that you've made, but we will do everything we can to make sure that we get some balance and we get as close to the truth as we possibly can. So thank you very much for that statement and I'll now pass it by May to Council.
Thank you. Mr Bowles, could you state your full name for the record?
My name is Martin Gerard Bowles.
And you are the Secretary of the Department?
I am.
And how long have you held that position?
I was originally appointed as an Acting Secretary and then appointed. In all, I have held the role of Acting Secretary for approximately two and a half years.
Thank you. Mr Cormack, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Mark Francis Cormack.
And is it correct that you're the Deputy Secretary of the Immigration Status Resolution Group?
That's correct.
And how long have you held that position, Mr Cormack?
All of us.
Thank you. Miss Constantino, you are the Assistant Secretary of the Australian Human Rights Commission Inquiry Task Force?
That's correct.
Right, could you state your full name?
Katie Constantino.
Thank you. You also have a particular role with respect to children in immigration detention, do you?
That's correct, my substantive position is Assistant Secretary of the Committee's Support in Children's Branch.
Thank you. Mr Bowles, is it correct that you were not present at this inquiry this morning when evidence was given?
That's correct.
And is it correct that you made that opening statement without the benefit of hearing any of the evidence that was given this morning?
I didn't hear any evidence at all.
Now, you spoke in your opening statement, Mr Bowles, of the fact that the number of children at Christmas Island has recently reduced to 153. Is it the case that some of the children who are no longer located on Christmas Island have been transferred to Nauru?
That's correct, some have.
Right, how many have been transferred to Nauru in the last two months, Deputy Secretary?
I wouldn't know the number in the last two months, so I don't think...
I'm trying to get this thing for you. Thank you. Now, you also indicated, Mr Secretary, in your opening statement that the Department is cooperating fully with this inquiry. You're aware, Mr Secretary, that one of the issues or questions the Commission has asked about is the cost of detaining people on Christmas Island and what the cost per detainee is. Is within the ability of your department to come up with those costs, is it not?
Excuse me for a process issue, but how do I refer to you?
You can call me Miss Chas, if you'd like.
Sorry, Miss Chas, I just can't see your sign, that's all. I'm a little short, sorry. Michelle, I might just explain a little bit. I referred to it in my opening statement around the whole issue of the costs of detention. This is an issue that has been around for a long time, about average costs and things like that. When I took over this role, I took a particular interest in trying to understand the basis for how we fund and cost and operate in the detention space. And we have been developing over the last two years in particular quite a complex but sophisticated model that actually starts to work out how we actually deal with things. I have always resisted the notion of average cost because the nature of average means that you're actually coming up with a generic person almost to actually cost. And that is not how things operate in the real world. We have developed quite a specific model that takes into account the type of detention, the environment, the place, the Christmas Island versus an onshore detention centre. We've tried to understand, are they a single adult? Are they part of a family group? Are they children? Are they company or are they part of the family group? All those things play into the cost.
Mr Secretary, we have limited time, I do want to apologize for cutting across you. However, the question I asked was whether it was within the ability of the Department to come up with the average cost per detainee of detention on Christmas Island. Is it within the Department's ability or not?
Michelle, I'm answering that question in a way that explains what actually happens in the real world of understanding the cost of the system. We do not fund the system on an average cost. We fund the system based on a very complex demand-funding model and I'm explaining how that actually works.
But, Mr Secretary, I might move on. One of your key roles as the Secretary of the Department is to keep the Minister fully informed of events and circumstances relating to immigration detention, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, Mr Secretary, the Commission has information that in the fifteen-month period from January of 2013 through June of 2014, in detention centres on the Australian mainland and on Christmas Island where children have been held, seven serious assaults, 233 assaults involving children, 436 incidents of threatened self-harm, 207 incidents of actual self-harm, 33 incidents of reported sexual assault and 183 incidents of voluntary starvation or hunger strike. Does the Department accept that immigration detention is not a safe environment for children?
Michelle, I think you're quoting a lot of statistics which, you know, I have no reason to doubt. I don't have them to the top of my head, obviously. But you're describing an environment where since the, you mentioned January 2013, I was to go back and look at the arrival rates from January 2013 to March 2014. There were significant numbers of people arriving and yes, there were incidents of assaults and self-harm and a range of different issues, all of which the Department takes extremely seriously and we will investigate any of those issues. We provide a safe environment and in all safe environments with sheer numbers of people that were being dealt with in those times. I am sure some of those issues did happen and whenever they did happen, we would investigate and try and rectify those issues. If we identify a systemic issue that is actually allowing certain things to happen, of course, we will actually move to rectify that. So there is never a ripe point in time answer to any of those decisions.
Mr Secretary, does the Department accept that it owes a month's eligible duty of care to children in immigration detention?
That's a natural for a community.
Mr Cormack, can I direct some questions to you now, please? Wesley, do you accept that the average length of immigration detention is increasing?
Yes.
Now, the Department releases statistics on immigration detention on a quarterly basis and I beg your pardon, on a monthly basis and the most recent statistics as of 30 June this year state that the average period of time for people held in detention facilities is increasing to 350 days as of 30 June 2014. That's a very long time for a child to be in immigration detention, isn't it?
That is acknowledged in a previous report from the Commission and also those figures that long periods of time of detention.
Michelle, could I just add to that answer as well?
Yes, please, Mr Secretary.
I reference in my opening statement the work that we've been trying to do to get children out of detention as soon as we possibly can. That will impact on all of these sorts of issues when, again, we're talking about averages and we always continue to work on these issues. As I mentioned, there's been quite a significant reduction in the number of children in detention. We will continue to do our utmost to actually do more than is humanly possible to get these things happening. But there are still some children in detention at this stage.
Mr Secretary, I was rather concerned by this repetition of the idea that you, through the Minister, are removing children from detention. What you're not doing is finishing the sentence by saying a significant number of them are going to another detention hall on Nauru. Is this, are you being straightforward in telling the general public that you're getting significant numbers of children out of detention where in fact they are being sent somewhere else from detention?
Well, let me make it very clear, President, I reject the imputation on that question. I said right up front, some are going to Nauru. And I have made...
Can you tell us how many you're on?
You asked for about two months and we're trying to find that out for you at the moment. So we're working on that. But there has been a significant reduction at July and I'll stress again, nearly four and a half thousand people arrived into Christmas Island in July alone. At that point, there were 1,992 children in detention. Today, there is 659. There is a number on Nauru. It's not the difference. There are not 1,400 people, children on Nauru. There's a hundred and something in total. So I reject the imputation that we are either misleading or lying to anybody in relation to the reduction of children in detention. There has been a significant and considerable decrease in the number of children in detention.
Thank you for that, Mr Secretary. According to the 30 June 2014 detention immigration statistics, there were 699 children in detention in mainland Australia or Christmas Island. In your opening statement, you said that figure has now come down to 629 children. I beg your pardon, 659 children. Now, perhaps you can take this on notice and one of you may be able to answer this question towards the end of this examination. Of the forty children who have moved out of immigration detention on the mainland or on Christmas Island, how many of those children have gone to Nauru? Is that something you can take on notice?
We can take on notice. I'm not sure we'll be able to get it straight away, but I'll take on notice.
Thank you. And, Mr Secretary, also according to the 30 June statistics, as at that time, there were 183 children on Nauru. Again, may I ask you to take on notice the question of how many children there are now on Nauru?
My understanding, I think it's the 22nd of July, I think it's 185.
Thank you. Now, I'll direct this question to you if I may, Mr Cormack. In 2010, the government commissioned, or the Department commissioned a study by Jeanette Green and Cathy Eker for the help of people in immigration detention centres. Are you familiar with that study?
No.
Are the other members of the panel familiar with that study? So none of the... Uh, so none of the three members of the panel are familiar with the study convened by the department entitled The Health of People in Immigration Detention Centres?
I'm not specifically aware of the report at this particular point. I'm, I'm aware Kathy, uh, Kathy Ecker was a member of the then Immigration Health Advisory Group.
All right. Um, so I take it you would not be aware of the finding in that study that the incidence of mental disorder among detainees increased as the length of time in immigration detention operates?
Uh, I think even without knowledge of that report, uh, I think it is, it's, uh, a well-established issue that the longer people are there, the, uh, the, uh, more, uh, issues people do face. I think that's, that's a given. Uh, that's not to say that, uh, that the department is not doing everything in the name of possible to deal with that in a mental health, uh, context.
Um, Mister Secretary, data that has been provided by your department to the commission reveals that one hundred and twenty-eight children in closed detention in mainland Australia or on Christmas Island self-harmed in a fifteen-month period from January two thousand and thirteen to thirty-one March this year. Uh, and in the same period, eighty-nine adults self-harmed. May I ask you this? Why do you think the rate of self-harm is so high amongst children?
Um, firstly, can I just correct you? Because my understanding is it's one hundred and twenty-eight incidents, not children.
I, I accept that.
Uh, and I think the adults is probably the same issue. Uh, they're incidents, not people.
Yes.
Uh, and what you do find, uh, when you get into this space is the same person, uh, who may have, uh, more incidents. So we can't necessarily extrapolate, uh, the numbers to number of people. Now, sorry, what was the rest of the question?
I asked you why you can, why, do you know why the rates of self-harm are so high in children in immigration detention?
I, I think there, there's a range of factors. And, and look, I am not a psychiatrist or a mental health practitioner, so I, I don't really want to make any assertions in relation to why, uh, one group might be higher than the other. Uh, a- again, uh, this is, this is why we have experts appointed to actually look at all of these issues. Uh, we constantly monitor the incidence of self-harm. Uh, we, we manage, because some, some self-harm incidents are threatened, some are actually attempted. Uh, so we, we try and actually manage them in, in a very, uh, you know, quite a strategic and operational way so that we can actually reduce the impact, uh, on, on any, any, uh, future issues that might happen in the detention.
Uh, Mister Secretary, in view of that strategic management objective we've just spoken of, what steps have any has the department taken to investigate the causes of these high levels of self-harm amongst children in detention?
Um, there's, a ra- a range of, uh, issues happen. And I might, uh, get, uh, Mister Constantin or, uh, Mister Cormac to help me on this. Um, but again, uh, we, we have a whole, uh, you know, the IHMS group, uh, assist us with developing, uh, developing statistics around this issue. Um, we, uh, we, we look at this in, in quite a broad way. There are significant numbers of mental health staff uh, on, uh, on Christmas Island, for instance, in, in the context of Christmas Island, across the entire detention system. And it's working with all of these people. Uh, we, we quickly place different steps, uh, from our, our support programs, psychological support programs, the, these programs, that, that, that makes, uh, treatment specific to individuals. Because generally speaking, uh, most of the issues that impact on people are different person to person. So we try and personalize all of these things, uh, to, to the individuals concerned.
Uh, Mister, uh, Bolz, a- at the moment, I'm not talking about the, the incidence of self-harm. I'm talking about looking at the causes of self-harm among children. Has the department taken any steps to investigate the causes of these high levels of self-harm amongst children?
If I could just respond to that, um, uh, the premise of our psychological support program is that, is on preventative and monitoring strategies that reduce detainees' self, uh. Uh, there is a reasonably solid base, um, which we're not contesting at all, uh, which, which, you know, associates a link with detention with a whole range of adverse self-conditioned. So we're not, we're not in any spring to pick the p's. But he, um, uh, accepts that and, uh, and focuses on reducing, uh, the risk of self-harm uh, through a coordinated individual care planning that is getting to know the individual, um, person who's in detention, providing a range of meaningful activities, providing as supportive an environment as possible. Um, and also when there are signs of, uh, early signs um, of medical illness or medical conditions, uh, then a supportive monitoring engagement program is put in place. And that, um, you know, that works across the three levels, uh, which could be just increasing the level of monitoring. Um, I've, uh, and obviously referral to, uh, mental health conditions. Uh, if, uh, a person's, um, a medical condition deteriorates, uh, a higher level, uh, of monitoring and support, uh, is provided. So our approach is to, um, recognize the periods of risk and to put in place a package of programs put together by skilled health professionals, cross-medical professionals, uh, to best respond to that.
Uh, Mister Bolz, you spoke of the experts who are monitoring the levels of self-harm in children. Who are those experts?
Uh, again, the clinical staff that work for IHMS.
And do they report regularly to you?
Uh, they, they report through the system. Uh, the, uh, there is various levels of reporting, uh, right away from, from the lowest level. So they're managing individuals through the centres, through to the detention world. And, uh, and, and so we get a good understanding of, of what is happening. Mister Cormac manages the major issues with I H M S. Uh, so it's a very senior, uh, arrangement which, you know, in understanding the delivery of health services more broadly, uh, to the detention network. There, there are significant resources, uh, there in this area. Uh, and I would also say, over the last twelve months, the investment in, uh, health and medical, uh, services more broadly uh, has been significantly enhanced.
Um, this morning, we had some evidence from Dr Peter Young, who is the former Medical Director of Mental Health Services at IHMS. And he gave the, the commission, um, some evidence that IHMS has introduced a new, uh, scale for measuring mental health amongst children in detention called the HANOSCA. Have you heard of that measure before?
Uh, yes, yes.
Now, Dr Young reported that IHMS had determined on the basis of their HANOSCA that I believe one-third of all children in immigration detention, uh, were suffering, uh, signs of mental distress and, and the like at rates that were a third higher than those reported amongst children already engaging in community mental health services. And are you aware of that data?
Uh, I wasn't, I was, as I indicated earlier, I wasn't here this morning for, uh, for Dr Young. I just might add that, that, the, uh, the HANOSCA reporting uh, is a national scale reporting. It's not specific to immigration detention. Sorry, Misha.
Yes.
Uh, I just want to make up for quite a specific point. The HANOSCA reporting is a, a, a national outcome scale on mental health, uh, related issues, here for children and adolescents. It is not specific to an immigration setting. So I make that, that, that point. So, uh, I'm, I'm happy to, to, uh, to look at all of these issues. Um, but, uh, as I understand, if the, the IHMS through, uh, through Dr Young and, and others uh, have been looking at introducing new data, uh, into, into the scale. So you very likely got it up on the wall there, uh, into, uh, the detention network. Uh, we are currently actually making an assessment of that about how we can actually incorporate that. This, this is relatively new, uh, new thing that has been introduced by, uh, by IHMS. Uh, and, uh, we, we are considering how to use this. Uh, we have, I have a chief medical officer and he is currently assessing, uh, how we can actually do that. I also have an independent health advisor, uh, who will also do that. And it, it's more than likely that we will introduce this, uh, into our system. But equally, we want to be actual, we want to be sure that it, it is actually pointing to the right issues for us to manage, given this is a broader scale. Uh, and we're now talking quite specifically about, uh, immigration detention. Uh, but I don't have any objection to, uh, the, the broad use of some scales like this.
Uh, Mister Bolz, Dr Young gave evidence this morning that the results reported on the HANOSCA were concerning. Um, Dr Young also gave evidence that the HANOSCA is a reliable measure. And Dr Young also gave evidence that the HANOSCA is a scale that is used widely in the community and amongst mental health, uh, facilities in the community. Do you accept those propositions?
Yes, uh, that's what I said, just said.
So you accept those propositions?
It is, it is a, a, a national outcome scale. That's, uh.
Uh, Mister Bolz, are you aware of when IHMS first reported the results of the HANOSCA measure to the department?
I'm not personally aware of that. But as I said, uh, what we would normally do in this circumstance, and I understand what's deep in this circumstance, uh, we, uh, we take it on board. We don't necessarily accept it on the first throw. You know, someone launches something, uh, on us. We want to, uh, understand how does that actually fit, uh, with our current reporting? It is not, it hasn't been part of our current reporting. But as I said, uh, I've got the chief medical officer and my independent health advisor actually looking at that now. If it, if it actually fits within the environment, and I have no doubt that it probably will, uh, in, in some shape or form, we will introduce that.
Uh, Mister Constantin, are you aware of when IHMS first reported the HANOSCA results to the department?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Uh, Dr Young gave evidence this morning that it was first reported to the department in, in the last few weeks. Uh, has the department accepted the accuracy of the reporting by IHMS of the HANOSCA results?
I can't, can't comment on that. I don't work in detention.
Uh, Bolz, are you able to comment on that?
I have, I have just answered all of those questions in relation to the HANOSCA. I said I have my chief medical officer and my independent health advisor looking at that right now. As you rightly say, it was introduced in the last couple of weeks. We are looking at that. And, and as I said, uh, I have no doubt that most of this sort of, uh, this, this sort of reporting is mainstream. It is mainstream. Uh, I've worked in the health system, uh, myself. I understand how all these things work. So I have no doubt that it may. I want to make sure that it actually fits within the immigration detention, uh, data reporting requirements that we have. If it does, we will include it.
Mister Bolz, have you personally been briefed on the results of the HANOSCA reporting? Dr Young gave evidence this morning that when IHMS reported the HANOSCA results to the department, uh, the department had a negative reaction to this reporting and requested IHMS to withdraw the reporting. Are you aware of that, Mister Bolz?
Uh, I wasn't there, so I don't know what the reaction was, Misha.
Are you aware of that, Mister Constantin?
No.
Are you aware of that, Mister Cormac?
No, no.
Uh, does it concern you that the former Medical Director of Mental Health Services of IHMS has given evidence that IHMS reported these results on mental health in children to the department? And somebody in the department requested IHMS to withdraw the report?
Uh, I'll just a quick comment and I'll hand to, to Mister Cormac. Um, I, I've said a number of times, Misha, that, uh, we are assessing the data. Uh, I have a chief medical officer. Uh, I'm not doubting Dr Young. I'm not doubting the reporting. I've said that, uh, we will look at this. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's like anything. When something new comes in, we will make assessments. Uh, I have a chief medical officer and independent health advisor who I am, I, who I have asked to make sure that they're across a whole range of issues. Uh, this will be one of them.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mister Secretary. I don't, um, completely answered my question. My question was, is, are you concerned that somebody within the department has asked IHMS to withdraw the results that it has reported about the HANOSCA measures of mental health in children?
Uh, Misha, the, uh, there has been a statement made today. Um, you've heard one side of the statement. Um, what our normal practice is, and it depends on, uh, how the interpretation is objective and what negative, I think you said negative, uh, is. If we, our normal practice is to consider these things through our chief medical officer and independent health advisor, we will do that. Uh, I, I cannot make an assessment about something I did not see personally. Uh, if in fact, uh, if, if in fact there was a problem and some of our staff did an inappropriate thing, I will deal with that. I cannot say that that actually happened in that way at this point.
Mister Bolz, would you be taking steps to understand for yourself whether it is in fact the case that somebody from the department has requested IHMS to withdraw the reporting on the HANOSCA results for children in detention?
Uh, Misha, if it is in the context of getting advice from the chief medical officer and the independent, uh, health advisor, I, I would suggest it's appropriate until we actually get that assessment. I'm not going to make that, I'm not going to make any, uh, any, uh, take any conclusion on that.
Uh, if I could just add a point there. Um, we work very closely with our service providers, um, uh, SUCO, um, or the detention service providers, IHMS, of health. Um, it's a dynamic working arrangement. Um, ideas, um, for providing services are regularly brought to us. It's part of our, of our relationship with them. Some of those ideas can be based on new reporting tools. And I think this is probably a good example of one of those. Our response, so typically, um, uh, when something is first reported, uh, if it requires an immediate, um, clinical response that we, we need to put additional resources in to respond to a, a disturbing, um, trend, then we'll take steps to do that. If a service provider is suggesting to us, as would appear to be the case here, uh, that they want to improve or revise their reporting arrangements and that's what HANOSCA does, the reports on, um, uh, you know, on, on, on the mental health of our, uh, detainees, then we're booked to, we work with them to incorporate it into our regular reporting arrangements. So, um, the fact that, um, um, there is a fact that, um, uh, data was requested to be withdrawn from a regular reporting tool simply means that we have to work through, uh, that with the, uh, with the provider and incorporate it into our regular monthly reporting. So it, it explains simple as that.
Um, given, Mister Secretary, given that the department accepts that the length of detention has, uh, an adverse effect on the mental health of detainees, have you taken any steps to inform the minister of the effect that increasing defiance in detention are likely having on the mental health of detainees and in particular child detainees?
Um, Misha, uh, the, uh, I've had a lot of conversations with the minister about all parts of this portfolio, which I'm not going to go into in this call. Uh, the minister is acutely aware of the issues of, of all parts of the detention system. Uh, and as has, uh, all governments, uh, since I've been in this portfolio. As we, as we know, we've had, uh, a change in government last September. Um, so, uh, the policy around detention has not shifted in the last, at least the last ten years that I'm aware of. I don't, I don't know a lot about it prior to my time, obviously. Um, but, uh, clearly I have a number of conversations with the minister about, as I said, about all parts of this portfolio, uh, children, families and other detainees, for example.
Uh, you mentioned in your opening statement that a learning centre is being- You mentioned in your opening statement that a learning centre is being constructed on Christmas Island. Is it right that at this point in time and up until this point in time, there have been no school facilities on Christmas Island for the children?
That is not correct. There has been an arrangement in place that had a small centre, a small arrangement in place with the Australian Government around schooling that goes back when the numbers were much less. I explained a little bit earlier the significant upsurge in numbers in recent times. I've also said in my opening statement that where we become aware, I'll just try and find the specific paragraph because I actually made a specific point about this, that where we do identify a problem, we seek to address it. The numbers that we, the schooling arrangements we had in place prior to the upsurge was okay. The upsurge happened. We, I'll admit, we were not quick enough to do that. But I did go to the government and we did get funding through the normal budget process to develop the current structure for education and learning on the island, which is now up and running and will be progressively built on over the next little while.
Mr. Secretary, given that answer, when do you date the upsurge inquiry?
The real upsurge probably goes back to sometime in 2013, maybe. It's hard for me to say off the top of my head, so let me just, so the, where are we?
It hit the high point in July of last year, didn't it?
It hit the high point in July. So from January 13, it started to escalate to the high point in July, which was that 1992 I mentioned, down to 659 as of the 22nd of July.
So if you're the previous answer to the question, Mr. Bolz, do you accept that for at least the whole year, children on Christmas Island have not been provided with adequate educational opportunities?
No, I don't accept that. I think it's a couple of things that, one, you missed my answer to the last question, which is we did have a small arrangement in place when the numbers were smaller. There was a period. But equally, before the change in government current policy, a number of people were moving on off Christmas Island very, very quickly. And they were going on a breaking business. So there were short periods of time where they didn't have access to education. Once we became aware of this real surge, we started to do some work on this and we have been sort of, we have developed.
Is it your evidence, Mr. Bolz, that over the last year, that is since the surge in July of 2013, there have been adequate educational opportunities provided to all children on Christmas Island?
Firstly, I didn't say the surge started in July. The surge started much earlier than that, it reached the peak in July. And I have said a couple of times now that we recognise that we didn't have appropriate education in place. I said it in my opening statement, I said it a couple of minutes ago, and I'm saying now. When we recognise these things, when they come to attention, we do something about it. I went to the government, I asked for funding, I got funding from the budget round, and we've developed the current system.
Mr. Secretary, do you consider that the department is presently fulfilling its non-negative duty of care to children on Christmas Island?
Yes, yes, Nishah.
Now, Mr. Secretary, you'd be well aware of the situation of the 157 Sri Lankan asylum seekers who have been recently detained on a customs ship. They've now been transferred to Curtin Immigration Detention Centre, haven't they?
I think that's in the media, that that's what.
Regardless of whether it's in the media, what is your evidence to the inquiry? Is that where they've been detained?
That's correct.
All right. Are there children amongst those people?
There are. I don't know the specific numbers at this stage. We're going through what we would normally do in entry interview processes to determine all those things. There's obviously our own individual issues that we need to determine through that process.
To the best of your knowledge and information, is it about 37 children that are presently being detained at Curtin?
I couldn't comment on the specific number at this stage, Nishah. That sounds about, well, it could be more, could be less. I don't know if we actually go through the process.
Mr. Bolz, do you have no idea whatsoever how many children are presently detained?
I just said that probably around that number. There may be a few more, there may be a few less. We need to finalize the entry interviews.
And Ms. Constantin, does that accord with your understanding of the situation? My understanding is that we're still working to provide that. Does it sound about right that there are 37 children detained there? Is it right, Mr. Secretary, that Curtin Immigration Detention Centre was designated to be closed?
That's correct.
When was that closure to occur?
It's next year.
Just on the question of how many children are now at Curtin, are there any babies amongst those children?
Again, until we actually confirm them via data and all those sorts of issues. But my understanding is there are some small problems.
I will fill that. How many, what's your best information as to how many babies are at Curtin?
I don't know.
Ms. Constantin, are you able to assess? Are there any pregnant women on in Curtin, Mr. Secretary?
Again, I don't know at this particular point. Sorry, can I ask the audience to remain quiet? Say anything, everyone?
Certainly, Mr. Secretary. It's important that we move through this examination as quickly as possible to get through our witnesses. Mr. Secretary, there's a detention facility at Leyden in Darwin, isn't there?
That's correct.
All right. That has about 700 empty spaces at the moment, doesn't it?
I don't know the specifics, but there are a number of spaces available in many of our detention centres across the country, Nishah. That's why we're closing them, the number of them.
It's, the case that Leyden is a far more modern immigration detention facility than Curtin Immigration Detention Facility, isn't it?
I don't understand the question.
It's a more modern, I'll put it another way, I'll withdraw that. You're aware that for many years, the Australian Human Rights Commission has expressed concern about the conditions of detention at Curtin Immigration Detention Centre?
I have heard past issues around that. But I also know that we have done a lot of work in the Curtin Detention Centre over recent times.
But aren't you designated to close the Curtin Immigration Detention Centre?
Yes, we are.
Isn't it the case that you're aware that the commission has urged the government not to detain asylum seekers at Curtin Immigration Detention Centre?
First of all, the detention centre is due to close on 30 June 2015. And it is one of our detention centres. And it will continue to remain operational until it's closed down.
Mr. Secretary, are you able to explain to this inquiry why Curtin was selected to accommodate these asylum seekers?
It's part of the detention network. And it was a decision, it's close to where they were received at Curtis Keeling Island.
Darwin, the detention centre at Darwin is closer, isn't it?
No, it isn't.
Who made the decision to detain this cohort of asylum seekers at Curtin?
Well, ultimately, I suppose I take responsibility for that. I take responsibility for the operational decisions, but I would have been advised through my, through my district.
Will the children who are now detained at Curtin attend school?
It's, obviously, anybody who resides in our system. I think the minister has made it very clear. They remain subject to the normal policies of the government. And wherever they finish, they will have access to schools.
The commission inquiry has heard evidence today that the clinical decisions and recommendations of IHMS health staff are being overridden by the department. To your knowledge, Mr. Secretary, are the recommendations these medical staff routinely overridden by the department?
Not to my knowledge, and I would be very upset if that were the case.
Is it right that mandatory detention is sustained as a policy in order to deter people coming to Australia by boat?
It is not my role or job to talk about the policy position of the government. I would make the statement that it has been the policy of subsequent governments over a long period of time.
Is it right that it's the government policy of deterrents being a guiding objective in managing immigration detention centers?
It's an issue in understanding the broader movement of people trying to stop people getting on boats and dying in the ocean, yes. One of them, I wouldn't necessarily suggest it's guiding.
Some people have suggested that immigration detention, particularly on Christmas Island, is designed to break the will of the asylum seekers so that they elect to return home. Do you agree with that proposition?
I actually am quite offended by a range of these statements because it actually attacks the professionalism of my staff and service partners' staffs in trying to deliver the best possible care for the people that we are dealing with. I have made it very, very clear that this has been a policy of many governments over many years. My job is to deliver on those policy positions. And we will continue to do the best, absolute best we possibly can to deliver the health and safety of the individuals in our care.
Mr. Secretary, how do you reconcile the longstanding policy of deterrents with its non-negative duty of care to children in immigration detention?
Nishah, I'm not going to go into a pros and cons of a government policy. If that point needs to be made, it needs to be made to the minister or politicians more broadly.
Do you have any evidence on how those two matters can be reconciled, Mr. Secretary?
I'm not going into any of those. I've just said this, there are policy positions of governments of the day, plural, over many years. I am not going to go into a critique of that.
Mr. Secretary, a little earlier in our discussions, I asked you to take the question on notice about the change from 699 children in immigration detention as at 30 June, down to 659 today. I am now in a position to say how many of those, let me do my maths, 40 children were transferred to Maru.
Our understanding is 17.
Thank you. Could you kind of make me one, my, please? Mr. Secretary, Deputy Secretary and Assistant Secretary, thank you for your time this afternoon. May I just correct?
Of course. I'm sorry, in relation to the 17 children that were spoken about, that was a response to your question regarding how many people have been transferred, how many children have been transferred in the last two months.
Thank you. So just so I can clarify that number, there were 699 children in immigration detention on Christmas Island as at 30 June this year. There are now 659 children on Christmas Island. That's a 40 child difference. In relation to that 40 child difference, 17 of those children were transferred to Maru.
Seventeen have gone over the last two months. So the number, the 699 number may not be the right figure to use if you're faced, that's all. We'll take that on that and confirm that properly.
Thank you. Well, if I can thank you all and thank you on behalf of the President for your attendance today. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you, Nishah.
We'll take a break until two o'clock. The President will leave that, she has a meeting with the Attorney General and the Parliament. The President will leave that. She has a meeting with the Attorney General and the Parliament.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually, for the... The line of service. Because it's just... We don't have... I think...
It seems to pay me out. I think that... Yeah, cool.
I'm fishing. Yes.
With... Um... In... This is...
That's... Oh, that is fantastic. Isn't that... She said it is. Oh, yeah. This is huge. And...
Hashtag... Yeah. But she... I think... She... My... Again, sure.
Yeah. Yeah. We got...
That's so...
Good.
Lovely everybody. Thank you all for...
Lovely everybody, thank you all for staying with us. We really do appreciate it because one of the objectives of any public hearing is to get information out to the public and for members of the public to be able to form their own views on the evidence that's produced here. And we will be interested in any feedback you want to give us because that's important. It's important and important for any public hearing and or inquiry hearing here at the Australian National Commission. So thank you for staying with us and thank you especially for Kirsty Diarra because she's been extremely patient and cohesive to the department in allowing them to put their evidence in when you've just begun yours. So may we now resume your evidence please? And we do very much appreciate your direct answers to our questions. So I'll pass over now to council to continue with the questions if Ruth Waring is quiet.
Please stand face the person at the Australian National Commission. Do you solemnly and sincerely affirm that the answers you will hear to the questions asked during these proceedings will be true?
Yes. Miss Diana, can I help you describe to the inquiry what the surface of the ground is of Nauru or OPC three?
Oh, it's large rocks, white stones. They're on footwear so they cut the shoes. Probably staff, a staffer advised to take more than one pair of footwear for a three-week rotation because they will wear through that footwear quite quickly. So children, their footwear is often damaged. They might have holes inside the toe surface in the bottom of their shoes. I've seen children who require to strap adult thongs to get it. But the ground surface is not particularly applicable for children.
Is there a requirement that staff on Nauru wear closed footwear?
Yes, it is a requirement that they wear closed footwear.
What footwear have you observed being worn by children?
Rocks with holes in the bottom of them and adult thongs with the backs stripped off so that they can wear them with wire tying the thong together. And children sustaining any injuries because of the ground scrubbing and the footwear they're wearing? Parents were warned to me that they had cuts and sustained cuts to their feet. And children regularly, almost daily, would approach Save the Children staff and beg for shoes. They would show you the holes in their shoes and beg you to get them some shoes.
When you were giving evidence before lunch, you talked about the accommodation, which was in a lounge or tent accommodation. Could I now ask you to tell the inquiry what other facilities are available at OPC three?
There's not really any other facilities available. There's a tent that I actually miss operate medical clinic out of. When I was there, they were constructing one playground, but prior to that, there was no play equipment for children. There was no place to purchase play equipment or toys or books for children. The education or school was in the camp and was in tents. The children were forced to share a space, maybe three or four different classes that would be in one space with big industrial fans that would make it very difficult for children to hear what was being said. They had to sit on the floor because there was no tables and chairs. So a lot of children were just stressed about the lack of education facilities.
Aside from, I'll come back to the school and facility if I may, what if any recreation areas were there at OPC three while we were there?
There was a tent, again, everything was a tent. So there was a tent for recreation activities for the children and Save the Children recreation staff ran daily activities for children after school.
Was there anywhere for the children to play sport or run around?
They could run around in the camp. That was the only space that they really had. You had to get permission to go outside the camp. So to play sport outside of the camp wasn't really possible unless it was a special program organized.
What about in the camp, is there any way they could play sport?
Halfway through, probably in January, they opened a space where there was some trees, so a bit of shade, and they put up a volleyball net, but that was mostly viewed by adults. That was the only space really for children to play in. So children generally just used rocks and stones and played dirt.
And prior to that time in January, were there any shaded areas where children could play outside?
No, there weren't any shaded areas. I often conducted assessments with children sitting out in some or sitting next to a tent to try and get some shade, sitting on the rocks.
What, you've given evidence that the children were playing with the rocks. So what other activities did they ordinarily engage in, the leisure activities?
Recreation programs were ongoing to save the children, but without those activities, it was just... They didn't really have much to do. They would pick up, you know, industrial waste, things that were left and sticks and things like that. They would climb sometimes some of the barriers, the fences, just to pass time.
Do you have any comments based on your observations at Nauru about the type of clothing that was provided to the children?
The clothing provided was grossly inadequate. So children often had just one pair of items clothing that they would arrive in. So they would be wearing midic clothing and be able to get any other clothing. So for example, I had a seven-year-old girl who for six weeks asked me every time she saw me if I could get her some shorts or a t-shirt. She would wear a skivvy and tracksuit pants. And after six weeks, her mum said, "I have a mosquito and I will now make this into a dress for my daughter."
And was it your observation that the inappropriate provision of clothing to children was widespread or was it isolated?
It was widespread, it was throughout the camp.
Now, while you were working at Nauru, were you familiar with the food that was being provided to the children?
The children frequently complained about the food and I actually did eat in the camp on a couple of occasions with the families. So I did observe the food.
And what can you tell us about the food provided to the kids?
It wasn't particularly appetising for children. It was the same food all the time. So there was like vegetable salad, lamb chops, like shrimp and lamb chops. And there was usually some kind of curry, like a dal with rice. The children, a number of the children I worked with would say that they can't eat the... That they don't like it. A lot of the children also had problems with their teeth. So they had significant dental problems and couldn't eat the food because it was hard to chew for them.
Just on that topic, to your knowledge or understanding, were there any dentists on Nauru at OPC three?
My understanding was there weren't dentists and children were placed on waiting to see dentists, but they had significant dental problems.
During the entire period you were at Nauru, were you aware of whether a dentist ever attended at Nauru?
I wasn't aware of a dentist attending.
In relation to the food provided for children, were children ever provided with snacks between meals?
Not, the only snacks that were available is parents could buy from a shop that operated a couple of hours a day. They could buy junk food, chocolate and sugary drinks. That was the only things that parents could buy for their children with points. They weren't allowed to take food out of the dining tent and parents weren't supposed to have food in their accommodation. So if they had a young child, they would complain often that they didn't have anything to give their child after eight o'clock at night if the child was hungry.
Now, is it right that there are a number of children on Nauru with only one parent? That's right, there's a number of single parents. To your knowledge, were there ever occasions in which a child with only one parent was separated from that parent for a significant period of time?
I'm not aware of a child being separated. I am aware of some issues with a single father and his two children. He was assaulted by security staff. So when obviously he went for treatment, there's some concern that his children are then not able to have a care people with them.
What, what happens if a parent, a single parent, for whatever reason, is unable to mind their child for a period of time?
Well, sometimes Save the Children staff would be called down to look after a child and stay with the child. We would encourage parents obviously to develop some friendships with other people in the camp and see if they could assist with the child minding for a short period of time.
To your observation, were things such as toys or reading books or colouring books, pencil pencils or pens ever provided to children on Nauru?
They were not available, they weren't available at the shop that operated in the centre and parents regularly requested that they be able to purchase toys and books for their children. I start with a four-year-old girl once who begged me for an instructional book on using therapeutic tools because she just wanted to have a book.
What other education services provided by OPC three children?
So at the time, classes were provided in the camp, in a tent. I believe that they are now provided in the administration camp, which is OPC one, so in classrooms. At that time, they had a, I think it was like a middle primary school, lower primary school and upper primary school and then a high school class. So they weren't able to put children in specific classes based on, I guess, their capacity and their ability. Obviously, resources were fairly limited in terms of books, pencils, stationery, those kinds of things.
How frequently did children attend those schools you've described?
Schools on every day, Monday to Friday. A lot of children didn't attend and a lot of adolescents didn't attend. They would complain that the curriculum wasn't useful for them, that they weren't doing things like maths or science and that they weren't studying anything, that there was no benefit for them. And some children wouldn't go because the environment's so overstressing that they had no chair, no table, no pencils, that they couldn't hear the teacher. So some students would stop attending because they would get so upset from going to school.
To your observation, were there any areas in the camp where children were able to do their homework?
There was no way for children to do homework. They, if they were in their accommodation in the tent, they would have to sit on the floor and do it, which is obviously dirty and dusty, not a very appropriate space.
Are there any other comments you want to make about the schooling provided to children in OPC three?
I don't have any other comments about the schooling.
Information that's been given to the commission suggests that there's a practice on Nauru of guards and other staff referring to children not by their name but by their vote ID. Are you familiar with that practice?
The vote ID is used all the time and you'll see in incident reports that children are not referred to by their name, adults aren't referred to by their name, they're referred to by the vote ID.
To your observation, did this practice have any effect on the children at Nauru?
Children would often identify themselves by their vote ID. So when you would ask their name, they would tell you what their vote ID was. It was particularly concerning that they, you know, didn't have any particular identity. Their only thing they identified with was a vote ID.
Were you in the position while you were on Nauru to regularly observe interactions between guards and children?
I did observe some interactions. There were also a number of conversations with colleagues regarding interactions and there were concerns from Save the Children staff in terms of guards' interactions with children. So there was some inappropriate, I guess, interactions. There was a little girl, the youngest girl that was in the camp, I think she was about three years old. She was often picked up like she was sitting on their lap, which workers felt was inappropriate. On occasions, I observed adolescent girls engaged in what I would describe as flirtatious behaviour with adult male guards. And I also had a colleague report to me that he had observed an adult male guard stroking a 15-year-old girl's hair.
Did you ever observe these guards acting in a violent manner towards children?
I didn't observe any violence. There were some concerns that not specifically guards, but some other local staff had been physically aggressive towards children. A client of mine who was 17 was in the shop to purchase some items and Salvation Army staff who was actually restrained from hitting the young person. There was also reports that that bus driver threatened a child with a cricket bat.
Did you ever observe the guard or auxiliary staff retreating or behaving in an otherwise abusive manner towards children?
I think sometimes staff perhaps didn't have a very good understanding of children and how children behave when they're under stress. And so there wasn't a lot of tolerance. So sometimes children, I guess, would be labelled as naughty. Maybe they would be threatened verbally with physical chastisement because there was a lack of understanding of what that behaviour was about.
Did the children ever express to you any concerns about their treatment by guards or other staff?
Children didn't express to me. They did talk a lot about not feeling safe and that they didn't believe that their guards would keep them safe. So there was also quite a lot of violence that occurred between adult males in the camp and children and other parents physically chastising someone else's... And children expressed concern that no one could keep them safe from that.
The commission's been provided with some information suggesting that a 16-year-old boy was sexually assaulted by a cleaner on Nauru. Were you able to tell this inquiry anything about that incident?
So the incident occurred in the month of November. It was actually, part of the incident was actually witnessed by a security staff, was from a security staff. The 16-year-old boy was near the toilet box and there was a male cleaner who was on his own in the centre. It's unclear why he was on his own in the centre, it was against policy. He touched the boy's genitals and then grabbed his own genitals and said, "Giggy giggy". And at that point, guards alerted because the young person was screaming out and had kicked at the garden... Sorry, kicked the corner, but clearly something.
Now, obviously, Nauru is an institutional framework for the full-time detention of children. In that context, can I ask you, to your knowledge and observation, what child protection framework is available?
So there's no child protection legislation that exists in Nauru and there's no child protection authority that exists in Nauru. So the capacity to, I guess, put in place strategies to prevent child abuse, just at the least. So the role of Save the Children was to, I guess, address child protection concerns, but we didn't have the normal avenues to address those child protection concerns. For example, in Australia or in the UK or in any other country where there's a child protection system, if a child's at risk and the parents aren't able to protect, then you would have the option of removing that child. Or you would have the option of removing the perpetrator as a threat to the child. That wasn't an option in Nauru.
Are you able to indicate around about what percentage of staff on Nauru, be it they are guards or auxiliary staff, were Nauruian?
I don't know how many. I know that a number of the services had an obligation with Department of Immigration, part of their contractual obligation to employ a percentage of Nauruans. Save the Children didn't have that in their contract, but from what I understand, every other service provider did.
Now, your background is in child protection, but that's right, isn't it? Are you able to assist the commission with understanding whether there were any sort of, what I'd describe as working with children checks for the Nauruian staff who worked at the detention centre?
So my understanding is that there's no capacity for there to be any working with children checks done of local staff because they don't have the legislation and they don't have the infrastructure in place to do those checks. So none of the local staff had checked in terms of working with children.
In your dealings with the children and with the parents on Nauru, did any of them report whether they felt comfortable with reporting any instances of abuse to the authorities?
In the instance of the child that I just mentioned, his family were fearful of following through with any criminal action. I was advised that that was the only option and that they should have taken that option. However, they were terrified that there were a number of other local Nauruans in the camp who would be aware of the reason why their friend was dismissed and that if they followed through with criminal actions, the repercussions for that family would be serious and they weren't prepared to put up with that.
The commission's been advised that people, the detainees in Nauru, spend a very large part of their time queuing for things. Is that consistent with your observations? That's right?